Oh, you didn't have to do that for me.
I know. Um, we brought tea, we brought water. It's good, it's good, this place. I brought pepper. Hope he's got a good seat over there. Anita's watching. You're welcome, Anita. No problem. No, I said, I said, there's one over there, but...
What's that?
I said, no, I didn't know if you were looking for a tripod, I said, there's one over there.
Always bring one.
One of the nudies, I think somebody left one behind, sure that happens a lot. Hope you don't come in your way. You want to get more people interested? It's the way you learn.
Yeah.
Came from the computer company, just dive in. Of course, I have to find out other ways that don't work.
Yeah. Well, I admire that you keep doing that, and I'd like to know what's pushing it.
Oh my God. Surely, I said something to you.
I'd seen it.
And, and I'll read a paper this morning, after college, I said, oh, I gotta find out how to post that. Then, when it posted to my feed, um, this morning, I'm putting it out there. You were prepared. Well, that, I, a letter.
Kirk has like a fishing net.
Looks what?
It looks like he's a fisherman.
No, I thought that's it now.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome all to a regularly scheduled meeting in the Town of Montgomery Planning Board for Monday, August 26th, 2019. We either are some agendas on the front desk for anyone who would like to follow along. Um, can I see a show of hands for people who would like to make a comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Okay, yes, please identify yourself for the record.
Thomas Walcott.
I'm okay.
Well, I thought he was coming up.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to use the microphone, or?
Yeah, and if you could, you know, we've only got about 10 minutes for comment, because we've got three public hearings and a, a number of other things to go over.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Thomas Walcott, I'm from the village of Maybrook.
Hi.
I have no vested interest in Medline Industries or Bluewater Industrial Partners, and I have no professional nor personal association with Mr. Featherstone of Mazur Consulting. Mr. Featherstone is the current Town of Montgomery Planning Board Lead Consulting Engineer. Concurrently, he serves on the Orange County Partnership as a Principal Associate on the Board of Directors. Per Orange County Partnership's webpage, its mission is to find the most advantageous and cost-effective location for corporate attraction and expansions. Orange County Partnership is a private marketing agency for business development with an extensive history of support for Medlined Industries. It is also noteworthy that Bluewater Industrial Partners is listed on Orange County Partnership's investor directory. As a taxpayer, I question if due diligence is being completed in an objective manner, given the circumstances. Has the system of professional review been compromised? Did Mr. Featherstone submitted disclosure notice regarding his involvement with Orange County Partnership, Medline Industries, or Bluewater Industrial Partners? Did Mr. Featherstone recuse himself due to any conflicts of interest? Realistically, can one render an objective and professional review of Medline PEIS and Bluewater FEIS with vested interest in two diametrically opposed objectives? In conclusion, these are not idle questions without merit. On the contrary, they are being asked with the expectation that he will discharge his duties to the public's best interests, not corporate's. In my opinion, any and all decisions regarding Medline Industries and Bluewater Industrial Partners will remain suspect until these issues are resolved. Anything less will be a disservice to the community, a violation of public trust, and perhaps an act of nonfeasance. Respectfully submitted.
Hi, I'm Stephen.
How are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
I just want to bring to your attention that we unloaded dumpsters of strapping up at ASAP recycling.
Okay.
There's photo, I have a photo of it from my yard with the truck with the container loaded on the scale, scale light on. It is going on, it's been going on. And, hell, it's on the side, eh? They left this born to what it looks like, and then, you know, there's another truck with a loaded container on the back of it, on the back of the roll-up truck, that's on the scale. I just want to bring to you guys, is there something that should be done?
I just had a question for, um... I just had a question because, um, when you were reviewing, this doesn't work.
Start a switch on it.
When you were reviewing, um, PEIS, and Mr. Monta Moreno had said that, um, he was not in favor of accepting it because the town supervisor had said, um, to the developer that he would provide water in sewer. I was just wondering, because I was looking, that's so speculative, and I agree with his objection that he accepted it. Maybe the attorney can answer, um, does that hold up? That if the town supervisor promises water in sewer without a vote of the board, how can that be any part of a proposal?
This is a compensation.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'd like to know, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll go into our, uh... The first public hearing of this evening, 9:15 Route 17K LLC Skabisky Magrano. SEU permit site plan three lot commercial subdivision, continuation of public hearing. Representing the applicants, Larry Marshall, how are you, Larry?
Good, how are you this evening?
Listen, on, uh...
Uh, we do have several documents into the board regarding, uh, this application. This is continuation of a public hearing for a three lot subdivision and site plan. Uh, we, we are awaiting comments from your consultants, um, regarding lighting, uh, the revised plans, uh, the revised site plan, um, some other documentation as well. So, what we ask the board is that, while we're here to receive public comment, uh, we don't have anything new to present, we're waiting back for comments to be able to revise the plans and reports and et cetera. Uh, so we ask the board to can receive whatever comments and then continue it on to the next meeting.
Okay. Yes, your honor.
Larry, you got the, uh, the traffic review response on August 15th, so that's under review, and site plan comments are due back to the board on the second.
Okay.
Before our workshop, so we should have that. On your latest, uh, set of plans, it says Sheet 1, uh, had revision the end of July. Do you know what, it's not identified clearly, I don't even know what it was.
The end of July, um, I believe that was associated with the hours of operation. I, I believe, I'll have to check on that. Um, but I'll, I'll confirm that. I believe that was the only revision.
Um, so this hearing will stay continued beyond this evening. The applicant and board are awaiting comments from our consultants. And then we'll review them and we'll discuss them. This is a public hearing, so we'll entertain a public comment. Uh, this, this hearing has been opened since June, so, um, hopefully we'll hear something we haven't heard before, and if you can... As we're going to continue this, if you can keep your comments kind of brief, so we can move through our agendas this evening. So, is there anyone that would like to make a comment on 9:15 17K at this time? Yes, Charisse?
Thank you. I think if it may help, clarification, I think it was the addition of the berm as well, and not just the change of the hours of operation. But again, we can verify that for that update. The points I would like to talk to today is in talking about the replacement of the deciduous trees in the shelves, which has been offered to help alleviate the visual effects of the building. It is offset by evergreens, it removes the diversity of the trees. In 41419, the Town of Montgomery Conservation Advisory Council said, quote, "Since a lot of trees are being removed, the type and variety of trees being replaced is important. The landscaping shows mainly spruce, there should be more deciduous trees, important for bird and bed habitat." Included, it goes on. So, I would like to, um, ask that while total appreciation of the evergreens, it seems like we've abandoned any of the deciduous trees in the shrubbery, so I'd just like that under consideration. Also, um, one of the documents I have here is called the line of sight map. We talked about it on the last meeting, if anybody cares to look at it, I brought it with me. I have some comments on that, we discussed it a bit in the last meeting where we were. It actually appears to, for me, to be a very generic template that's used for this evaluation. The document shows the residence, which is the residence of mine, in line of sight B2B, set at six feet high, uh, the high sight line at approximately the first floor elevation. The actual sight line from my home on the first floor is actually 10 feet above grade. I stood on the ground, stood in my first floor window, and made sure I made a mark, and it's about 10 feet. So, my visual aspect is from 10 feet. I would like that to be noted. So, therefore, the visual line of sights for both horizontal and angular do not replicate the actual visual impacts. Uh, the document also only utilizes a single level home. The residence referenced in B2B is actually a two-story. So, what about that line of sight that is not being included? Does this infer that what is seen from the second floor is not being considered, and if so, why not? And since we assume we're not prisoners to be forced to huddle in our home, why is the sight line only evaluating the home? There is a complex deck system set at equal measure to the first floor elevation, and it is actively used as a living area. And our yard, a butts route, say, 17K, we're about 60 feet across, and so we are not allowed to be considered in all these aspects as part of that line of sight. On August 6th of 2019, am I too loud? Garland Associates Leslie Dotson suggests a simple noise study may be helpful to address noise impacts. Then states, "It seems important to note that the warehouse bays for the warehouse building on proposed Lot 2, which lot is closest to the north and the west, are facing the south. This means the backup noise generated by trucks backing up to the bays would be shielded by the structure itself. Only employee car parking is located on the west side of that building. The proposed warehouse building on proposed Lot 1 shows some bays to both the north and the south, though the ones facing the north should be shielded from the higher grade of Lot 2, as well as the building itself on Lot 2 to the north." It is written as a statement of fact, which I believe is only opinion, as any actual acoustic information is not referenced. Added to the fact that sound in not just backup beepers, truckload and unload and other processes stemming from a warehouse travel in an acoustic wave and are propagated. The wave then striking a solid, in this case perhaps a metal surface or reflected back. Sound direction changes in many solid mediums, as in the case of many metals, actually conduct the sound with greater efficiency than air. The sound waves that resonate between the warehouses can in fact be amplified as the warehouses are placed in parallel to each other. Also, irreducibility definitely affects how sound and how far it can be detected. None of this is being considered. So, I question the fact that it will shield the noise, it won't. I studied communications electronics. Sound waves do things, they just don't dissipate. You think about when you put your speaker in a box, it gets amplified when it can be focused. Those buildings can act as a focus. Okay? Okay? And I did review other things, but on the fact that I know you want to go on, there's more documentation. I'll, um, I will rest, we'll see at the next one, but there is more. I'll be brief tonight, and I appreciate it, thank you, everyone.
Anyone else on, uh, this project? Yes? Karina, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This gentleman, you go.
Okay.
No, no, you're up.
He's clearing the path. Hi, Karina Tintin, I just have one quick comment. This is on the response to comments letter that is dated August 15th, with reference to the traffic studies. Because I, as you may know, have been reviewing the Sailfish documents, I noticed that the applicant had included some generated estimates from other projects in the area, and I wanted to point out that I believe they are underestimating de-traffic generated from Project Sailfish into the study area, and I, I wanted to request that the board and its consultants double-check these numbers. Um, I don't have access to all of the documents that are included on this. Also, I wanted to make a note that they're referring to a 2% growth of traffic in this area based on historic DOT data as conservative, and I wanted to note that that also is in opposition to statements made by other applicants. I believe the 2% growth is conservative, but I just wanted to point out that there's a lot of different traffic studies being submitted to this planning board, and they all have different conclusions being drawn from them. Thank you.
Anyone else? At that court.
Yeah, hi, let's try to keep this quick, because I know you had, uh, want to keep moving here. But, a couple of things I'm still going to point out. I believe that you yourself asked for, one of these was an architectural rendering from the applicant, three months ago. I don't think that's been provided yet at all. Still, my question still exists for the well and the people's waters up in that area. That's still ongoing, hasn't been done. Question I had was also, still, I mean, if anybody could explain how we had multiple FEASs, and it was great that they reduced the, the water demand by suppression by over 1,000 gallons. How, how did they get that figure? For three iterations that you had of the FEAS since March, you kept staying with one number, and all of a sudden, miraculously, you reduced it by 1,000. I don't understand how that came, so I was hoping somebody would explain that. The, what was requested, I believe by Leslie Dotson, snow removal location on the property is still not addressed. Impervious surface, nobody takes into consideration the blacktop, the paving that's going on? I didn't see, I saw in the, in the paperwork, it just said rooftops, that's all I saw. The, uh, August 6th, Mazur cover letter says, uh, "Sampling frequency and groundwater monitoring have not been met," but I'm just curious why there's no reference in any of his response to well number four, which we now know is under a parking lot. Talking with the DEC, they still say that's still viable, because we've had my own discussion with the DEC, as I'm sure they have as well. The other question was, um... Now, you, you saw the letter from the attorney, I know the last meeting, where they said they would give up construction on Sunday, but the operating hours, after multiple iterations of this, all of a sudden goes to 24/7, seven days a week, including holidays, and that, to me, is still not acceptable. I don't understand what changed and why that changed all of a sudden. That's in the paperwork now, and that should not be, to me, allowed to stand. You know, I have to live it, I have to deal with this. Again, uh, there was also a comment, I believe, by Leslie Dotson, was asking a question about Lot 3. I guess maybe it might be a parking lot for repossessed cars, I don't know, but storage area, uh, you're going to have to maybe put security fencing up, and how would you do that on top of a cap? Well, I called the DEC, and they said, under no circumstances can you penetrate the cap. You'd have to have a lot of, uh, detailed information, so I make sure you know that. The other thing, just very quickly, I, I know we talked about this being an I-3 area, and, um, it's, it's supposedly this island, but I've come to learn that, that I-3 only became in effect because it was the Skabiskis who wanted it that way. So therefore, in my opinion, they've kind of created this situation. The area of this property was originally RA2-zoned. The industrial was toward the back end of the property, which I obviously am not going to complain about, but it was originally RA2, Skabisky wanted to change that back in 1964, and he, um, had an unconforming use, and that's why he, he did it. So, for, to have, uh, see letters here saying, oh, the hours now, you know, the, "We're not going to change the building size because it wouldn't be economically feasible for us. We're not going to change the hours because it's not economically feasible." That's not my problem, they created the issue, I did not, I have to live with that. And, um, talking about the residential, I don't know if you, if you're interested, but I just made these, uh, little showing is up here, showing that it's not just, uh, not just an isolated area, there are plenty of... This is what the area looks like, it's not conducive. There's a lot of residential areas that you guys got to really know. That exists.
This is B4, right?
This is B4 right here. Only, only, only this section right here, maybe here, but all this is residential. All that's residential. And all homes, 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 you're affecting, for one family, you're going to affect all these residents that you have to take into consideration. Now, I mean, I had plenty here if you wanted to see it, but to know that is the character of the neighborhood, and we really shouldn't be changing the character of the neighborhood. And the last thing that I had was proposed line of sight, this is what we see, and they, they, a lawyer wrote a letter saying how it didn't, wasn't going to affect anything, but we won't see supposedly the warehouse that's going to be right here as you come off, and you guys probably know this, but you're going to tell me I'm not going to see a warehouse here on Bracken Road, and you're looking to put a proposed driveway cut right here, right here on Lakeview, and the school itself is right here where the doctor's office and all these residents? It just doesn't make any sense.
All right, thanks. Good.
I don't know if you want a copy of all of it for everybody or not.
Yeah, it's fine, this, this is fine. Thank you, man.
And again, we will wait, I guess, to make the changes, or we'll wait for documentation, but we have contacted the DOT, and I know the accident report was supposed to be submitted too.
Right.
I know Mazur says a traffic report came in, but we looked at that traffic report ourselves. There's no mention of accidents yet, and it's still under investigation, so...
Yeah, we're waiting on that too.
All right. So, we'll see what happens, what the changes will be. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? That accident history was submitted to DOT, Larry?
Yes, it was.
Did you, could we get a copy of that?
We were, we sent it to you, we sent you a submission of it.
Okay.
Uh, if you need a submitted, uh, paper copy, that's fine, we submitted it digitally.
If we could have a paper copy for the record, please?
Sure.
Okay, um, so we've got a number of things that we're waiting on, and that we'll need to do, we should probably have prior to reconvening the hearing. We have a holiday weekend coming up. It's highly unlikely we'll have everything. It's highly unlikely we'll have everything put together for the night. Rather than reconvening and bringing everybody in with our workload, I'm going to suggest the 30th. Any comment, anyone on that? Does that sound?
23rd.
Oh, that's wise. So it's going to be September 23rd, 2019? We'll reconvene the hearing then?
7:30.
Pardon?
4:00.
We don't have anything else, so 7:30? So a motion to extend, reconvene this hearing on September 23rd at 7:30. Motion by Bill, seconded by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This will be the public's notice as when that hearing will be. Okay, thank you. Okay, next this evening is KCE NY 2 LLC and KCE NY 11 LLC, Route 17, 10 and Browns Road, SCU permitted site plan, battery, energy, storage. This is the initial opening of a public hearing. Representing the applicant is Hyde Clark. How are you?
Good, chairman, thank you.
The other mailman?
State my name's Hyde Clark. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We have KCE NY 2 LLC and KCE NY 11 LLC. Here with me tonight is also Aaron Curtin from Key Capture Energy. We have Lisa Oliver, our engineer from Fisher Associates, and we have our electrical engineer, Scott Reynolds. Just to give an overview, since this is our first initial public hearing tonight, what we're proposing is two unmanned battery storage facilities located at, near the intersection of Browns Road and 17K. Those two proposed facilities are permitted uses subject to site plan review and special exception permit as public utility structures. We're located near the Coltonham substation, which we will be tying into with the Gentai line from our facility. Behind the KCE 2 facility is a proposed substation to help facilitate that building. So again, KCE 2 is a 54,000 square foot building. All the components for the battery storage facility are going to be located within, inside that building. The KCE NY 11 proposed facility to the west will be located, those battery components will be located in containers. Those containers measure about 40 feet long and nine feet wide, or 40 feet long, eight feet wide. We did make our initial presentation, initial application to the board in February. Just to update the public, we have been to the planning board workshop session for two meetings. Our application has been reviewed by Garland Associates. We've had six review letters by Jim Farr, the engineering consultant. We've had two review letters. We did receive our Orange County Planning review letter back today, and we'll have response to those comments that we received today. We have two curb cuts on the KCE 2 facility and one access point for KC 11. We have received conceptual approval from DOT for those curb cuts. And again, it's an unmanned facility. There's no water services to the facility. There's no sewer. There will be no traffic generated from the facility after construction. Facility's moderate, 24/7, but off-site, so there's, there will be no one inside either facility. And we'll just reserve some time after initial comment. If you'd like us to come up and potentially respond to any comments, I would be super excited.
Okay, yeah, if you want to.
I do have, I have a site plan here. I have visual simulations of what each facility will look like. If anybody would like to come up after to review them, happy to meet them in the hallway and go over anything that we have to.
Okay, I'll open the floor up to comments. Anybody here like to ask a question, make a comment on this proposal? Sure, just come on up, state your name for the record, and ask your question.
Thomas Welkott from Maybrook. I had a question with regard to the size of the batteries that they're talking about and that they're going to be self-contained. Would there any special arrangements have to be made for firefighting?
I can want to.
Thank you. The technology is lithium ion batteries. In terms of the size of what they are, is they're arranged in modules, which are then arranged in racks. Within that rack is a fire suppression system to manage that. The cells are, were called starve cells, so there's no free-moving liquid within the cell. In terms of working with the fire department, we have contacted the fire chief. We'll develop an emergency response plan if necessary, and, you know, a big part of what Key Capture does is that education component, working with the fire department, working with the town to make sure that everyone's on the same page in the event if it's necessary that they know how to respond.
Yes?
So I want to mention a couple of things that the Conservation Advisory Council had some concerns about. One of them was, when we looked at the acoustic study table 3, it says the sound level will be between 45 and 53 decibels, analogous to between moving from quiet urban nighttime to quiet urban, excuse me, using quiet urban nighttime and quiet urban daytime sound levels. So that means that people on this relatively quiet rural road will be experiencing quite a change in the sound factor. And we think that sound screening methods should definitely be employed, particularly since the noise is intermittent. It can be startling if it's not a regular type sound. The other thing that we noticed is that the trees that were being planted, 10 to 14 feet tall trees, are being planted to screen a 27-foot building. So it doesn't seem like there's really going to be much vegetation, you know, dispersing the sound. The other factor, I read through the NYSERDA guidelines for storage batteries, and it seems like there's some, somebody mentioned the fire factors. There are quite a lot of strict regulations regarding fire safety. They also mentioned potential to release toxic gas during charging and discharging and normal use. They say there should be a hazardous exhaust system, which I don't know is being included. They definitely say there should be an emergency operation plan. The other factor is in terms of the proximity to Tin Brook, we're concerned that the Tin Brook and the wetlands may be affected by this in terms of this reduction in wetland storage facility, and since it's very close to Tin Brook. And also, the type of material gravel that's being put down could possibly change the pH of Tin Brook. So those were a couple of concerns we had. But the biggest thing, I think, is the sound factors and the possible health hazards. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi.
Hi. Karina Titten, again. I have a question. In reviewing some of the documents provided by the applicant, in one of their submitted cover letters urging for a fast review from the planning board, they made a reference to the expiration or the closure of a window for some type of funding or licensing, which I believe has already passed, and I wanted to ask if that was still a concern and when the next licensing or funding window would open up. And I'm asking this because I have noticed that we have a lot of projects in front of the planning board that have been open since 2005 in some situations, and I'm concerned about incurring another project that will just remain on the books for a really long time. I'm not sure if you'd like me to pause now or just save the comment.
Can you answer the question?
Yeah.
And your name?
I'm Aaron Curtin. I work for Key Capture Energy. Yeah, so that timeline was part of the NYSO, the New York Independent System Operator Interconnection Process. That was the start of the 2019 class year, and the regulatory requirement to get into that class year is a negative declaration. That class year started in August. There is a ability in the OAT, which is one of the things that guidelines NYSO, to get into the class year with a deposit in lieu of that permitting milestone. We have proceeded with that, and we'll get that deposit back when we breach that permitting milestone.
Thank you. I also had another question for the planning board. In one of the response to comments letters provided by the applicant, they referred to a referral from Farr Associates to the ZBA, specifically with reference to the placement of transmission lines within 60 feet of 17K, which is not permitted by our code. And then when Walt came back, when the building is, I'm sorry, it was within 600, I believe they are on the plan supposed to be within 60 feet, which is why it was referred to the ZBA for determination. Thank you for clarifying that. When our building inspector returned to work, he rescinded that referral, and I wanted to ask the planning board if that was kind of typical and if this was a situation where it did actually require a referral and a determination by the zoning board of Keels. And then the last thing is Patricia did mention the NYSERDA webinar. There is a recorded webinar and a really good workbook and a set of documents and checklists, and I wanted to ask if the planning board would like one of us to send that to you for your information. We can go, I saw somebody say we have that. Okay, super. All right, great.
We've also been, a bunch of us have been to the seminar.
Okay. I think one other thing, that's really excellent. I'm really, thanks, guys, for being so great at your jobs. One other thing I did want to mention too is that on the CAC, we did ask if there was a similar facility that we could go to, because as Patricia said, we are concerned about the noise impacts, and I believe the response was is that there are no similar facilities nearby that we can take a look at. We have heard that there might be some in, like, Hammerstraw, for example. I'm not sure if those are analogous to the facilities that you're intending to construct, but I do think that having a real understanding of the noise impacts, not just for the residents on that very rural road, but also to the Tin Brook and to issues surrounding wildlife in that corridor, the Tin Brook corridor, is also something that should be really seriously evaluated. So thank you.
Is there a facility close by similar to this one?
So I'd say the sound would be most similar to a substation. You know, the transformers at the substation, that would be a similar sound to a place where there are some of those transformers together. The most analogous would be there, so.
Thank you. In other words, you're saying that the transformers in the substation are similar to what you have, so noise emanating from that substation is similar.
That's correct, yeah.
Now, probably a couple of transformers over there. How many are you going to have?
Yes, there are 10.
Pardon?
There's 10 transformers outside on New York 11.
Yes.
And then the transformers for New York 2 are going to be located within the building. So, but there's, there's no similar battery storage facility nearby. But what we're saying is that the sound is coming from a transformer, which is similar to existing substations.
Just to clarify, it was, it was Chairman Fallon of the ZBA that asked Walt to re-look at it after he received more information from the applicant. Anyone else? You just got Karen's comments. We just opened the hearing. You got Karen's comments?
Correct.
Okay. You've got some feedback from the public this evening. A suggestion maybe we can have you back on. We do have a binding comment, though. And I believe, isn't there some regulation in regard to firefighting that was brought up at the seminar?
Yeah, one of the questions that NYSERDA had emphasized was that the moment updated fire court departments are IFC 2021, and they suggested, when the board members asked about this project specifically, they said that we should be asking specifically people to be compliant with the department.
So, I mean, I want to, the, I mean, this, this project, NY 2, is probably not going to be constructed for, you know, two to three years, so, I mean, to make it a condition that we have to be in compliance with the code that's in effect at that time, I mean, that's, would be part of a building permit, I would think.
Well, from what NYSERDA was saying, it's what matters is the application date, so that's why they were so emphatic about suggesting that we should ask what you're intending to do. And I think the board would not want to be in a position of having to set a condition that may be objected to later on on the grounds that it was not applicable. So if you're offering that, it would be.
Yeah, we can discuss that and.
Okay.
Okay.
The next question was, they said that we should be asking you about a decommissioning plan and bonding for the same, and they explained that that was actually more important than decommissioning and reutility of solar panels. So we were wanting to address that as well.
Okay.
No exception.
Yes.
Now, obviously, but yes.
And we will be creating a full decommissioning plan for that. You know, at this point, you know, we.
Can hear you.
Sorry.
We will be submitting a full decommissioning plan for that, creating a full decommissioning plan for that. At this point, I know we've submitted, you know, that one-page removal letter. It was with our initial application back in February, but there will be a full decommissioning plan for this project.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan?
We do. We've submitted that for both facilities.
Okay. So we have that?
Yep. Yes, that's been submitted, and I know that that's the one binding recommendation, so we have no problem meeting that.
Okay. Yes, Rich?
Basically, two of us from the board and our planning consultant went to the NYSERDA seminar a few weeks back, and it was certainly very eye-opening, us, these type of facilities. I guess it's called a tier-three dedicated system. And NYSERDA basically spoke about a series of plans that he needed to provide to us. Commissioning plan, fire safety plan, operation and maintenance plan, hazard investigation analysis, and a decommissioning. So.
Well, I think we touched on a few of those, that we will be submitting that, so the decommissioning plan, we were also.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that. So we will be creating all of those, you know, we are required to do that for other reasons as well, and so we will be creating full sets of those plans. We have not yet submitted a BOP, ROP for a contractor, and we would not at this stage. And so at this time, a lot of materials that would go into those sorts of plans would be assumptions, and so we would propose giving you guys the full plans once they've been created, you know, and having not be more with. know, having not be more with the building permit.
I assume that you would be, you know, I mean, you do this for a living, so...
Yes.
I, I just, it was eye-opening, the seminar, the NYSERDA seminar. We didn't realize that I was involved, so, thank you. And we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no other comment from the public on the board? Anyone else would comment on the DCE? There is a fair amount of information that we need.
Sir, I may have missed it, but I, you people have any information on your lighting plan?
Yeah, I believe we've submitted the lighting plan.
Wanted to see.
Sir?
We've submitted a lighting plan?
There you go.
We've submitted a lighting plan. And then there was a comment to see a larger version of the lighting plan, basically look at the lighting plan plus the impact on the surrounding areas. We resubmitted a second version where it showed not just the project facility, but also the 17K plus the Tinbrook above it.
With the catalog numbers and the fixtures and so on?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I'll get my hands on that. Thank you.
Yes, and we'd be happy to provide that again if you'd like us to send that over.
What I'm thinking is maybe the 9th is too early to bring up, the 20th, the 9th is too early. Maybe it'd be best the 23rd, we could be a little further along?
I think, we feel that we could provide those responses to the responses that we've received by the 9th, if the board is, has availability.
Still takes review time.
Yeah, we'd have to have them and look at them. Unfortunately, we have this holiday weekend. I think we'd be better off on the 20th, on the 23rd.
I agree.
Done, 7:45?
It's complicated and it's new for us.
Yeah, it's brand new. And not all of us unfortunately could attend the seminar. So, so I'll entertain a motion to extend this hearing. This is out to the 23rd of September at 9:45. Motion by...
Whoa, whoa, 9:45.
Oh, I'm sorry, 7:45. I have to make a note.
That late?
Not that late, yeah. Motion by John, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This would be the public's notice of that date, okay? 7:45.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next this evening is Bluewater Industrial Partners LLC, Project Sailfish, New York State, 17K, 747. SCU permit site plan continuation of the public hearing. We are awaiting the compilation of our review on the site plan for the applicants, for our review and the applicant's review. So this hearing will not be closed this evening as we, we will get that review soon. And we'll need to review, go through that thoroughly. Are there any updates on the plan, Chuck? I think we're probably in the...
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the audience that has a question or comment, something that we haven't heard, I hope?
Yeah, you haven't heard this.
Okay, Rich, how are you? Thank you. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. There's a little could be said that Bluewater hasn't come up with a solution for, you know? I mean, they, they've taken care of everything. So what, what can you ask, right? But I got a problem, fundamental problem. And I say that the town board and the planning board do not have the authority to broadly interpret zoning for Bluewater and Medline projects as allowable structures accepted, acceptable under the existing zoning codes. The planning board responded on numerous occasions to those questioning the legitimacy of the million-square-foot buildings with comment, "The building is allowed by our building codes." This allowance came from the planning board and town boards making a special permit use to include million-square-foot buildings without public approval. The fact a building such as a warehouse is allowed in each location, International Boulevard and 416, is not basis for including over-million-square-foot building structures in those proposed locations. A 40,000, 100,000, or even a 250,000-square-foot building could be conceived included in the code as it is written now, and such buildings could be acceptable. However, a million-square-foot warehouses are another matter as they encompass more than just a simple warehouse. They are in fact an entire pollution factory of noise, air, water, sewage, groundwater, visual traffic, trash generation, and not least impermeable surfaces. You can't compare a 40,000-square-foot building's permeable surfaces to a million-square-foot building. Locations of proposed buildings over 500,000 square feet have to require public approval in advance, and the master plan should indicate exactly where these megastructures are going to be located on a zoning map with red blocks. Public meeting must be held to have locations pre-approved and not by rationalizing the term warehouse as inclusive of all sizes. Size does matter. The town of Montgomery master plan should clearly state the only place in Montgomery allowing million-square-foot buildings is on Neely Town Road unless approved by the public master plan. Town board and planning board should not be allowed to adjust the code book to fit the building size. These two projects should be put on hold until public meetings can be held to approve locations for any buildings over 500,000 square feet. Until locations are approved through public meetings, Bluewater and Medline projects should be on hold. The town of Montgomery did not inform local residents in the vicinity of the project back early in 2018 when it was evolving. I received no letter indicating attention. A million-square-foot building is being planned right behind your property. I never knew that. Everybody should receive a registered letter on this project right out at the starting gate instead of major decisions being made for six months before most even knew about it. If a million-square-foot building warehouse was being scheduled behind your house, would you not like to know about that right away? This project was stealthily conducted for the better half of 2018 where significant decisions, zoning changes, and sewer plant custody were being made between Bluewater and the town supervisor. These projects should have been disapproved when it was laid on the supervisor's desk at the beginning of, beginning of 2018 because there was nothing in the code book that talked about buildings of these sizes. At best, the code could include a 250,000 or 300,000-square-foot warehouse, but insinuating the code allows 1.1 million warehouses is preposterous. Although it is technically and physically possible to put a million-square-foot warehouse on the proposed sites, that does not imply it is a good thing to do. Both areas have very sensitive wetlands and the size of the buildings are overwhelming. There is a serious problem here with our master plan and code book. The big picture is size doesn't matter. If this project was one-third the current design, I think it would be acceptable to many people now who are against it. The sewer plant. The FDIS stated this facility, and the FDI stated this facility, I know I was here before and, and the attorney here told me that it wasn't going to happen that way. But it does state it in the document that the facility will be turned over to the town of Montgomery as soon as it's completed. As I appreciably stated, ownership of this facility was a make-or-break decision for Bluewater to continue due diligence. It was done early in the project, probably around May or June of 2018. I am very confident Bluewater's continuation of its due diligence was dependent on this facility was handled. Without a doubt, Bluewater's seen the facility as a headache, a problem they did not need, and interfered with the Bing building, so sought relief through the town of Montgomery. Bluewater was not going to be satisfied with the verbal from the town supervisor or even the town board. Bluewater wanted a commitment in writing, so the building inspector was directed to send a letter to Bluewater in September last year committing to assume ownership of the facility. This was not only wrong, it was totally unnecessary commitment. The urgency for this town to assume ownership gives you some idea as to the importance of this matter. This issue should have been, never been agreed to without a public hearing concerning the takeover of the facility by the town. Furthermore, because of this early commitment, all planning board meetings since January were essentially for naught since the decision about this was made half a year earlier. There should have been an open meeting to the public requesting approval to take over the plant. A public meeting should be held on this issue before any further work proceeds on Sailfish project. I'm very confident that a public meeting will not be in favor of taking over the ownership of that facility. That's all I have.
Anyone else on Sailfish? Are you up? Yes. Harbor, right?
Yes.
Come on up.
I'm actually surprised that nobody else is speaking up tonight.
Well, we're going on another...
I think they're all waiting for their comments to appear tomorrow before noon. I keep going back to the FEIS, the DEIS, and the scoping document. And there are some areas where there is confusion and some inaccuracies.
Did you get it written down so they can just get it cleared up for tomorrow?
It will be.
Okay, great.
Yes, it will all be in there.
Good.
In the scoping document, on page four, it says the current tenant is unknown. However, the project description will include language that clearly defines the possible tenants that could occupy the building from a use perspective. This is a rental. You don't have the option as a board saying who someone else can rent the building to. If it fits the use in general for, under that zoning code, you have no ability to stop that tenant from moving forward. On page four also, it should be noted that there will be no onsite fuel storage tanks or truck repairs performed onsite. But comment 15-5 from the New York State DEC notes that on pages 8-2 and 8-3 of the DEIS, the discussion about onsite diesel storage. The response that was given in the FEIS is that the diesel tank would be located adjacent to the fire pump. This is a conflict with the scoping document requirement. On 22-12 notes that both hydrogen and liquid nitrogen would be stored onsite. Hydrogen is highly flammable and explosive. The applicant's response is that the safety measures would be instituted by the tank vendor and the still undisclosed warehouse operator. The planning board will have no knowledge of nor privy with either of these entities. So both statements by the applicant are inconsistent with the scoping documents. They speak about existing conditions, and I'm still trying to find where my 145,000-square-foot building is noted. I go through the documents, they note an art installation, there is no acknowledgement of 145,000 square feet that has been in use since the 1960s with over 125 employees. It's not there. They discount us completely, including in the section at the back of the SWIP where they go through a section on existing use in the surrounding area. We're still not there. I've talked numerous times at public hearings about college talecs relocating back to this facility with 100 full-time, year-round employees. And the acquisition by UAP, who is a multinational art fabrication enterprise with corporate offices on three continents and general offices in 40 countries. And this is adjacent to the public site. They, we have discussed expanding onto the vacant land on the west side of 747. However, it's unlikely that they will do so as the runoff from discharge point three and discharge point one feed either the wetland on the southern portion or the outfall on the northern portion. There is a stream that divides our properties, which will be overwhelmed with additional water. The stormwater plan discusses rate and not volume. The soils are already hydroic soils. We have been maintaining the property to keep down the vegetation. The only third qualification for creating a wetland is standing water. So I need the first major requirement by soil condition. I'm maintaining the property by mowing it, so I don't yet have all of the wetland vegetation. Once that water comes, I'm done. My property becomes virtually unbuildable. It's been shown to levels of cortisol in both children and adults, and that can contribute to everything from cardiovascular disease, cognitive function, and sleep disorders. This information has been brought to the board prior, not only for this project, but for others. And there, nothing has been addressed to mitigate this problem. The thought that plantings are going to stop sound is ludicrous. They don't. And the plantings will take 20 to 30 years to develop and be tall enough and dense enough to have an impact. The applicant was also required to describe the area, list the impacts, and provide mitigation. I'm getting tired of their comment, which states too many times to even count that "The project has been designed to limit adjacent area impact to the greatest extent practical." I don't want practical, I want possible. Possible isn't included. As I stated earlier, the, this is a wildlife corridor. This project encompasses virtually all of the buildable land. I've stated that there, the building proper itself sits on top of a wetlands. And if you look at, I believe at CS100, you will see a designated wetland, not a regulated wetland, but a designated wetland underneath the building proper. When I look at the drawings and compare drawings from, I think it was CS100 to, maybe it was CG, it's difficult to determine what is an access road and what is a stream bed. For some reason, they use the parallel and offset lines interchangeably on different drawings. So it's impossible to determine whether something is a roadway or if it's a stream bed or a vertical stream bed. The applicant only acknowledges regulated wetlands. They ignore unregulated and smaller, and they deny that this, these other wetlands exist. Just as forests are our world's lungs, water is our life's blood, and wetlands are the heart and filters that keep our world healthy. This project destroys all three. Just because a plan meets the absolute minimum requirement for development doesn't mean that the planning board should not hold them to a higher standard whenever possible. Our weather patterns are rapidly changing. The planning board should require future modeling, future modeling for every major project. The 100-year storms are now every three to five years. We cannot ignore the fact that 2007 was the wettest year on record or that 2018 into 19 is one of the warmest. These patterns will continue... These patterns will continue, and we must be prepared for these changes. We have to look forward, and not only to the past on all of these. The applicant also states that a supplemental EIS is not warranted when in fact the SEIS is warranted based on over 1,000 pages of drawings, calculations, and details that were submitted on July 25th. Even the engineer stated that he had not reviewed every drawing and every calculation for accuracy, and SEIS should be required to properly review all of the additional documents. They're seeking a zone change, and this applies specifically to site, the site acceptance site change, the...
Special exception.
Site application. The zone change would go from IB to I-2. We were originally I-2. If the project proceeds as it now is, it cuts off another adjacent I-2 property from having major access. So it makes that I-2 designation on Maple Avenue irrelevant. They denied the access, saying that it was, I believe, inconsistent with their plan. But that also creates spot zoning, because that will be the only piece of I-2 property available in the entire area. Everything around it is either business, interchange business, residential, agricultural. There is no other industrial. There was a question regarding hazardous materials in the warehouse. The applicant has no way of controlling what Alessi sells. For them to say that there would be no hazardous material stored onsite is impossible. They do not control that saleable portion. Companies such as Amazon, Wayfair, all of these companies do sell chemicals, often hazardous chemicals, such as chlorine, acids, and solvents. The applicant answered the questions concerning hazardous material just as though it was only referring to bulk storage. They also state that the applicable, the only applicable development in the area is Dunkin' Donuts. They have forgotten our repeated comments about the return of Pollock Taleks, the size of our building, the volume of traffic that goes past our driveways every single day already. In the traffic impact statement, the level of service with A being the best and F being the worst gets worse in the build conditions. These conditions are worst at Brown's Road and the intersection of 17K and 747 and Stone Castle. On page 30 of the TIS, table eight and page 32, the build conditions, both, at these intersections, both have a grade F at peak times. There is unfortunately no way to mitigate that through timing. We have this little thing called "right on red," and if traffic is turning right, you can't turn left. You can't pull out of your driveway, because you will be interfering. You will be going into oncoming traffic. It should be noted that the analytics used for the traffic build from the DOT, but the base data is not current. It's from 2009 to 2014. Over the past five years, there has been a significant increase in the number of businesses and housing developments in this area. The traffic builds are outdated, and while the New York State DOT may not have updated reports, consideration must be given to current conditions, and additional studies should be required. They remain steadfast in their assumption that pedestrian traffic is virtually nonexistent at the intersection of 747 and 17K. But I can assure you that people from my building do cross the street to go have lunch at Johnny's. And I can also assure you that many people park illegally in my parking lot and walk across the street the same way. They acknowledge that, or they feel that their employee base will be traveling to and from the site, but assume that these people will take 84. It's likely that these people will live either north or west of the site, as the cost of housing is far less. These people will be more likely to take either Rock Cut Road to 52 or 17K to Bloomberg and take 17 going north, as these roads provide the shortest distance and fastest transit to these areas. While 84 is an interstate, it's not always the shortest distance or the shortest time between these areas. The applicant has acknowledged that runoff will increase. They address rate, but very rarely the impact of volume on hydroxic soils where saturation is already evident. They've noted that in their test pits, that there was water evident at one foot. There is no more room for this water to go other than to expand the wetland and floodplain areas. I've also noted a few anomalies in the DEC permit application that was included in the FEIS. Tax ID isn't noted. Only two of the properties were included. Property is listed as commercial, not industrial. There's no note of potential runoff into the wetlands, even though construction will occur in the areas adjacent. Question 27 was odd. It listed a reduction in parking when the original plan called for a third as many cars. It went from like 300 and changed to over 1,000. Long-term operation and maintenance is listed as Blue Water Industrial Partners, but the applicant states in the IDA application that it will be turned over to USAA, and then that maintenance of the property goes to Alessi. So that is an accuracy in the DEC speedist permit. The application is still not signed or dated, and I don't know if that is a requirement at this time. I've spoken at length about future plans. I've talked to the board in great depth about where the town should be looking, what we are going to do, and what we want to be. I want you to take a step back and look at viable projects that would enhance the community with well-paying jobs. Look to create corridors of technology, corridors where 3D modeling and 3D printing is a viable source. We've got a huge arts community, a tremendous theatrical community in this area. To be able to utilize this property for something other than heavy, other than a high-impact, low rate of return on employment, because these are not high-paying jobs, would do greatly to benefit this community. I want to see something that is more than a great big box on the hill.
Yes.
Anyone else on Sailfish?
My comment isn't going to be as good as Barbara's, but I'm just limiting tonight's comment on the site plans.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to point out, there's some discrepancies in the construction sequencing as described in the final environmental impact statement and the phasing as described on the site plans and in their notes. In particular, it talks about daily construction vehicle volumes being significantly less than volumes that will be generated by the site under the build condition. And this is a big discrepancy, because the only access during construction until you reach Phase Six is going to be to Route 17K. So you're, you're looking at, I didn't bring my piece of paper out. You're looking at, I think it says, 150 to 200 passenger cars per day and hundreds of trucks during an eight-plus, seven-week period. The duration of traffic as it's entering and exiting Route 17K through a stabilized construction entrance is going to be pretty significant, and I would like the planning board to work with the applicant to come up with a more thorough solution. Also, I didn't notice any kind of tracking pad or any other kind of construction protection for Route 17K. As we all know, that is a very busy road, and it is a very busy interchange. And any kind of debris or rock or concrete or mud soil, there's a huge amount of soil that's going to be moved around. They've got a very long access road, and I just didn't see any stabilized. In addition to the stabilized construction entrance, I didn't see any kind of tracking pad or any kind of method to prevent sediment control when you're going in and off of the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Sailfish? Yes? And if you could identify yourself with this photograph, please.
I can't. Thank you for your hearing, Chairman. My name is Chiri, C-H-I-R-I, Zahakos, Z-A-H-A-K-O-S. Thank you. I'm here for our general statement. As we absorb and try to evaluate all the warehouses, I've taken the time, and I'm not sure if any of you have had the ability to sit down and look at our zoning map. I've tried to evaluate using both Google Maps and even learning even a little bit more today, working within the planning room itself. When you look at the I-1s, the I-2s, the I-3s, and the I-4s, when you evaluate all those lands, most all of them are now taken. With the addition of the possibility of Medline and Sailfish, you've basically eliminated most of any of the I-1 and the I-2. There is very few I-3 open. There is a great area of I-4 that I see that's not used. One of the missions, and you know it, I don't have to say it, is to look forward in this town. That is part of 20-30, I think. You must plan for the future. Just because we can have gas stations in an area doesn't mean we need 70 gas stations end-to-end. I know the law requires you to evaluate them if they're different and unique. But as you go forward in evaluating this in the lands that we are giving up, I can look at it and say that over 50% of it is somewhat being dedicated to all warehouses of various aspects. Now, I understand the county has picked us and highlighted us because of our benefits. I've also stated to this board that those are our jewels, too. I don't think that we should necessarily just so readily give them over to the first-come, first-served. There is a future. And what happens is, is by what's going on in the examination of that map on all these sites, that includes Neely Town, that includes Bracken Road, that includes Stone Castle, and others, various aspects, as I've stated, we're almost out. That happens to be a prejudice to any other future type of businesses that might want to use those lands. I understand that we look to today to what is in front of us. What it is our responsibility as a town, planning board and a board, to plan for the future. So by obligating this land, almost all the I-2, I-1 is completely now missing on 17K. And again, we know Neely Town is almost all gone, too. So I'd like that to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else who are looking for comments on the site plan? This is a public hearing on the site plan. Anybody else got any questions on the site plan? Any specifics on the plan?
No, I just want a couple of comments.
If they're brief.
They're going to be brief. How are you folks doing?
Good. Roger Wright, I'm a resident in Montgomery. I'm going to live near this Amazon warehouse. Have you, any of you's ever been to an Amazon warehouse? I recommend maybe you get on a bus and head down to Hazelton, PA, where they have a big Amazon warehouse. See what the truck traffic is, especially at night, because that's usually, most of them end up there and get unloaded. This facility, you're going to have jockey wagons, which will have backup alarms, flashing yellow lights. You're going to have, what, almost 300 trucks there at one time? That's a lot of, lot of diesel fuel up there in event there's an accident. You talk about lighting on some of these facilities. As it is now, when it snows in the wintertime, Stewart just about lights up most of Brown's Road in that area. What do you think this lighting is going to do? Especially to that new development that's being built right across the street? You know, you're giving tax breaks to everybody. Who is taxpayers going to be flipping the bill? Did you ever consider about just making a development? So when people drive down 17K, there's a beautiful, established development there. Houses that people can be proud of when they drive in there. Instead of driving down 17K and people go, "Who, who would live around here with these warehouses?" I'm in the trucking industry, you know? And you have no idea what the truck traffic's going to be at night. So I advise you, take a trip down to Amazon in Hazelton, PA, and see what it's like all night long.
Okay.
All right? That's all I have to say.
Anyone else, any comments on the site plan? Okay, board. We'll have our comments from Archie Stoltenz. After the holidays, we'll have a chance to look at them. How about we come in on the ninth? Resume this hearing, a reconvening hearing on the ninth at 8:15. We have two prior. We have a couple of other things on our agenda. So the September ninth at 8:15 will be when we will reconvene this hearing, so people come back in with more comments and questions. I'll need a motion, motion by John, seconded by Rich. All those in favor, say the party by saying aye. Thank you, everybody. Tomorrow at noon is the last day, or tomorrow's the last day for written comments on the FEIS. Just a reminder for everyone. Thank you. The next on our agenda this evening is Galaxy Limited.
Yes, good evening.
How are you, Russ?
How are you, Chris? I'm here this evening with Dr. Malloya, representing the Galaxy Limited regarding their application for a warehouse on Bracken Road. The property is about 33 acres.
Can't hear.
It is the northernmost parcel.
Sure.
It is the northernmost parcel of the Galaxy Limited Holdings, which is 754 acres. This is the northern extent of it. Bulk of the property is south of 84. This is one single 33-acre lot that exists of their holdings north of 84. It was all part of the railroad property back in the 70s. What is proposed is a 240,000-square-foot warehouse. Would have loading on the east side and a potential rail access on the west side. The eastern portion of the property fronts Baron Road. That is primarily wetlands. It's been delineated. It's federal wetlands. The delineation has been sent to the Corps for their verification. Access would be on the west side of the property through a driveway to Bracken Road, where traffic could head west on Bracken to 208 and south to 84, or north on Bracken Road to 17K, then east. The project would be serviced by its own well. Fire protection would be provided by the town's fire protection system that exists in the area. And sewer would be a pump station that would connect to the town sewer system that is a couple hundred feet west of the site on Bracken Road. This is just our initial presentation to get an idea, feedback on any zoning concerns. The board may have any specific concerns. And then we will provide additional detail going forward, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have this time.
Do you have any frontage on Bracken Road?
No, it does not actually front on Bracken Road. There is the railroad property between the site and Bracken Road. So we would be entering into an access agreement with the railroad, kind of like we did with Crestwood Facility. All the legal frontage is on Baron Road. We have met with Middletown and Jersey Railroad preliminarily to discuss the site. They're excited about providing additional rail service in this area.
Very glad to see you got a railroad in there, Russ.
There's not many sites left. Donald has been getting a lot of interest in the property. We don't have a specific user at this time, but there are a number of people that have touched base with him over the last several months. that have touched base over the last several months regarding a site that has rail service.
Russ, how many loading docks do you have on this?
We have room for 37. Not that we would build 37, but we have enough room for 37.
Okay, okay. And where are the truck, the trailers gonna be parked?
We didn't provide any additional trailer storage on site. We could. In this area, there's no wetlands. We could provide additional trailer storage if it was necessary.
Could be determined.
Could be determined, yeah. That would be, hopefully, as we go through the process, a lot of these users are looking for a site that is further along before they'll commit anything. So hopefully, as we go through the process, Donald will be able to finalize some kind of real estate agreement. We can then provide a little more detail on that.
What's the height of the building above the railways and things like that?
The site is pretty flat relatively. We're on a plateau of about 412 feet, it looks like. Building height is up to 55 feet. That's what your code permits. I don't see that we're gonna go to that height unless there's some specific user that really would need to do that. I would think we're probably in the 35 to 40-foot range.
Well, also, our biggest issue on Bracken Road is the intersection of 17K.
And Bracken Road.
Or, you want you to signal your trucks the other way.
Yeah.
Because you can't make a right on 17K and/or a left without...
Site distance concerns, yeah, because of the bridge there.
This is kind of similar to Henry Henning. We have the rail.
Yes.
Trucks heading to access at that point. So I guess just having, making sure that with the stop signs in place and that no truck would ever stop or be staged.
Yes, yes, so that, be staged so that they'd be on the rail as they're stopped to come up, yeah.
Rich?
Russ, it was fortuitous that you had the Crestwood project. This in a lot of respects is similar. Look at the commercial private driveway as a way to meet your public furniture requirement as opposed to a variance. The Baron Road access may be problematic because our code requires that you be physically able to use the public street even if you have access by easement elsewhere.
Okay.
But if you go from Crestwood 70 to 60, there's some flexibility.
Right, we get the commercial driveway, yeah.
Russ, we took a, we took a walk out on the site. And the biggest concern we had was the northern portion of the property where the stormwater management basin.
Correct.
There's a couple residential houses there on Maple Road. And it wasn't apparent, but it looked like you may be able to move that stormwater management to that rear pocket there that you were pointed at earlier. I think that may give you some more buffer, if that's possible, with grades and things like that.
And I think, I think it is, right?
And if there's anything you can do to kind of keep that residential area screened as best as possible with the...
Okay, we'll definitely take a look at that as we develop. This area here is at, that looks like 408, 410. And we're gonna be, I said 414. So it's definitely, looks like it's possible.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We'll send you comments tomorrow, Russ.
Thank you.